Good evening ladies, it's so nice to see your faces here. Let's go before the Lord. Father God, we're so grateful and thankful for this place that you provide for us. Father, we're thankful for all your provisions and we are just very excited, Father, to come to you tonight and just sing praises to you, Father. And I pray that our praises would be pleasing to you, that we would set everything aside and that we would glean from what you have Chondell teaching us today. And I lift her up to you, Father, that you would use her mightily, Father. So I pray that you would calm her nerves, that you would give her your clarity, that she would be able to speak your word clearly to those of us that are here listening. And Father, we're again so grateful for all you're doing and it's in your son's name I pray. Amen. Ladies, let's stand. Little public service announcement, if you could silence your cell phones, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much. I was thankful that he can make something beautiful out of this.
I am blessed, I am called, I am healed, I am whole, I am saved in Jesus' name. Highly favored, anointed, filled with your power for the glory of Jesus' name. I am blessed, I am called, I am healed, I am whole, I am saved in Jesus' name. Highly favored, anointed, filled with your power for the glory of Jesus' name. Should this life bring suffering, Lord, I will remember what kind of food has bought for me both now and forever. God, you're so good. God, you're so good. Oh God, you're so good, you're so good to me. God, you're so good. God, you're so good. God, you're so good, you're so good to me.
Sing that again, "you're so good."
Oh God, you're so good. God, you're so good. God, you're so good, you're so good to me.
I am blessed.
I am blessed, I am called, I am healed, I am whole, I am saved in Jesus' name. Highly favored, anointed, filled with your power for the glory of Jesus' name. God, you're so good. God, you're so good. God, you're so good, you're so good to me. Take all I have in these hands and multiply, God, all that I am, and find my heart on the altar again. Set me on fire, set me on fire.
Sing that with us.
Take all I have in these hands and multiply, God, all that I am, and find my heart on the altar again. Set me on fire, set me on fire. Here I am, God, arms wide open. Pouring out my life gracefully broken. My heart stands in all of your name. Your mighty love stands strong to the end. You will fulfill your purpose in me. You won't forsake me, you will be with me. Here I am, God, arms wide open. Pouring out my life, pouring out my life gracefully broken. Oh, here I am, here I am, God, arms wide open. Pouring out my life gracefully broken. All to Jesus now, all to Jesus now. I'm holding nothing back, I'm holding nothing back. Jesus, I surrender, I surrender, I surrender, I surrender. Your power at work in me, I'm broken gracefully. I'm strong when I am weak, I will be free. Oh, power at work in me, I'm broken gracefully. I'm strong when I am weak, I will be free. Oh, power at work in me, I'm broken gracefully. I'm strong when I am weak, I will be free. Your power at work in me, I'm broken gracefully. I'm strong when I am weak, I will be free. I will be free. Here I am, God, arms wide open. Pouring out my life gracefully broken.
Thank you, Jesus, for this time. Again, we just lift up Chondell to you, Father, that you would just give her your peace and help her to rightly defy your word. And it's in your son's name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Good evening ladies. How is everybody today? Good? Good. Well, thanks for coming out. Thank you worship team, always a blessing to us. So the last few weeks, ladies, I'm not sure how excited or convicted you are. I think I'm a little bit of both. James is an amazing book, especially in today's world. It makes us think, are we patient in our troubling times? Are we walking out our faith daily in action indeed? I hope so. Today, we're going to study James 3:1-12. The first part of this study is about teachers and then we'll move on and talk about the tongue. So if you'll turn with me in your bibles to James, we'll get started. Can I get an amen when you're there? James 3:1, "My brethren, let not many of you become teachers, knowing that you shall receive a stricter judgment; for we all stumble in many things. If anyone does not stumble in word, he is a perfect man, able to bridle his whole body. Indeed, we put bits in horses' mouths that they may obey us and turn their whole body. Look also at ships; although they are large and driven by force winds, they are turned by a very small rudder wherever the pilot desires. Even so, the tongue is a little member and boasts great things." See how great a forest, a little fire kindles? Verse 6. "And the tongue is a fire, a world of iniquity. The tongue is so set among our members that it defiles the whole body, and is set on fire the course of nature, and as it is set on fire by hell. For every kind of beast, bird, beast and bird, of reptile and creatures of the sea, is tamed and has been tamed by mankind. But no man can tame the tongue; it is an unruly evil, full of deadly poison. With it we bless our God and Father, and with it we curse men, whom have been made in the similitude of God. Out of the same mouth proceeds blessing and cursing. My brethren, this ought not to be so. Does a spring send forth fresh water and bitter out of the same opening? Can a fig tree, my brethren, bear olives, or a grapevine bear frigs? Thus no spring yields both salt water and fresh water." Wow, that's a lot in just 12 simple, what we would think are simple verses. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the ladies that have come out to hear your word, Lord. We ask you to open our hearts and our ears to hear from you, Heavenly Father. I ask you to send your Holy Spirit to guide and direct my words, Lord. Just go before us, Lord. We thank you for this time, in Jesus' name. Well, these 12 verses are pretty straightforward and tells us how we should speak and how powerful our speech is. Verse 1 talks about teachers and how they are held to a higher standard, a judgment. Trinity talked on this a little bit a couple of weeks ago, how being a teacher is a heavy responsibility and you are given the living word of God. We never want to misrepresent God or lead someone astray by our words. Thus we are cannibal for the words as a teacher of the word of God. Luke 12:48 says this, "But he who did not know, yet committed these things deserving of stripes, shall be beaten with few; for it everyone to whom much is given, from him much will be required; and to whom much has been committed, of him they will ask them James is very transparent in this scriptures, as well as in verse 2. "For we all stumble in many things. If anyone does not stumble in word, he is a perfect man, able also to bridle his whole body." I love how James says "we stumble." Did you ladies notice that, that James includes himself in this scripture? Because we all stumble, we all stumble in many things. We're all on a journey. I'm on a journey, I stumble, you're all on a journey and you all stumble, and so did James. But when we stumble, are we transparent with the Lord? Are we honest in seeking God in our stumbling and asking for wisdom and forgiveness? Maybe asking even for grace and mercy? But as we mature in our walk with Jesus, the stumbling should become less. Well, hopefully, right? Verses 3 and 5, we learn how something small, even words, have great effects. I love James' illustration of the horse. I'm an animal lover, not too much into horses, I like dogs. Some people say my dogs are as big as horses, because I have Great Danes, but nonetheless, they are not as big as a horse. So doing my research, I researched a little bit on horses. Do you know horse, average weight of a horse is between 900 and 2,000 pounds? It can start off at four feet tall and I think it went maybe six, seven feet tall and there can be up to eight feet long. That's a big animal. And then they talk about the bit and how small the bit is. I didn't realize this, but the bit is only five to six inches. And the bit is placed in the mouth and what that does is it communicates the horse with the rider. So as I was reading it, I was like, so this bit that's only yay big communicates, this helps us communicate with the horse, pretty amazing. So let's move along to my first point today, and that is, the tongue is a fire. You see this in verse 6 and 8 through 8. "And the tongue is a fire, a world of iniquity. The tongue is so set among the members that it defiles the whole body, and sets on fire a course of nature, and it is set on fire by hell." So reading this and studying this, I was driving into work today and I was like, one day, I said, "The tongue is like fire." It's kind of reminds me of wildfires. So when's the last time we heard about a wildfire? This morning, this afternoon, on my way home. About how, and being from California, we all know about wildfires. We had one in our own backyard just, what, a year ago? But it made me think how much the tongue is like fire and how dangerous fire is. Listen to these few scriptures. Psalms 39:1, "I say, I will guard my ways, lest I sin with my tongue." Psalm 64:3, this one really spoke to me. "They sharpen their tongues like swords, and aim their bitter words like arrows." Wow. Or Ephesians 4:29, "Let no corrupt word proceed out of your mouth; but what is good, for necessary edification, that it may impart grace to the hearers." That's another beautiful one. So my first point is, your tongue is like a fire. And my second point is inconsistent speech. "With it we bless God our Father," verse 9, "and with it we curse men, whom have been made in the similitude of God. Out of the same mouth we proceed blessings and cursing. My brother, these things ought not to be so." I love how James right here tells us straight out, these things can't be so. We can't praise the Lord, curse men that are made in his image. So let's think about our speech for a few minutes, ladies. How is your speech? How are you in a heated argument? Do you think before you speak? Do you listen to respond? Do you listen to listen? That's one thing I've been trying to learn this last few years is, I'm a fixer, I want to fix your problems, I want to be able to help you. What can I do to help you? Sometimes I don't hear the whole thing because I'm so eager and so wanting to help. So the Lord really told me, listen to all of it. And I remember when I was a child, well, not a child, I was married, and I was only married a few years. My grandmother, I was talking to her one day and I said, "Grandma, how did you do it? How did you raise five children, go from South Dakota to California? How'd you, how do you do it? How do you, marriage? How does, how does that work? You've been married..." At that time, she was probably married maybe 60 years and at the end, she was married 64 years minus one month. She told me, "You know what I do? I choose my battles wisely." Choose your battles? Everything is in the battle grammar. She's all, "No, but your words can start a battle." And that made a lot of sense to me, is, is it, is it worth the argument? Is it worth the, the battle? Are my words going to be good? Are my words going to be bad? Even raising children. I remember one time, I came from, my mother was a yeller, and I always, Henry's like, "Why do you, why do you talk so loud? You know, the kids are right there." And I was like, "Well, they gotta hear me." And he goes, "The neighbor can hear you." And I was like, "Okay." And then he actually stood on a chair one day and sat me down, and this is me being transparent here, and said, "This is what you look like to your kids." And I was like convicted, I was like, "Lord, help me with my speech. How am I speaking?" Proverbs 18:21 says, "Death and light are in the power of the tongue, and for those who love it will eat its fruit." Wow. James lets us know that inconsistent speech, it should not come from a Christian. Our speech should be edifying, lifting up, encouraging, and loving one another, ladies. So if our first point is, the tongue is... So if our first point is, the tongue is on fire, now we, and then we learn that inconsistent speech shouldn't be. My third point this evening is inconsistent living. Verses 11 and 12 say, "Does a spring send forth fresh water and bitter from the same opening? Can a fig tree, my brethren, bear olives? Or a grapevine bear fruits? Thus no spring shall yield both salt water and fresh." So, if I can come to your doors, how are you living, ladies? The question is, what is flowing from your mouth? So if your mouth is a faucet, do you have a freshwater handle and a salty, a bitter water handle? I love the illustration that James gives about the fig tree as well. Can a fig tree bear olives? No. Well, of course not. A fig tree will only bear, a fig tree will only bear figs, an olive's olives, an olive tree olives, just like a grapevine cannot bear figs. It produces grapes. What is James trying to say here? I kind of wrestled with this, but it showed me that we must live a consistent life. How are we speaking? How are we speaking to the ones that we love? How are we speaking to the people at the grocery store? Or the person who stole your cart? Or your parking place? This reminds me of, one day, I was with my dad, who was a widower, and we were at Walmart, and my dad loves to talk to everybody. "Hi, how are you? How you doing today?" And the cashier was like, "Mm-hmm, yeah." And I kind of was like, he's just saying, "Good morning. How are you?" And when he walked away, when my dad walked away, I said, "Excuse me." And she's like, "Yes." And I said, "Do you know that you're possibly somebody's only hello? And good morning? And how are you today?" And she looked at me kind of funny. I said, "So, remember that, that you..." He was just saying hello, and not in defense of my dad, but what are you saying to one another? I know that I can be short sometimes, but God works on me, and I'm thankful for that. So we have to ask ourselves, what is coming out of our mouths? What are we yielding? Are we praising God in the sanctuary and going home and not? And having not, and having the bittersweet, the bitter speech, excuse me? As a follower of Jesus, we must live a consistent life by the power of the Holy Spirit. In Ephesians 4:24, Paul says, "And that you put on a new man, which is created according to God, in true righteousness and holiness." He also says in Colossians 3:10, "And have put on a new man, who is renewed in the knowledge according to the image of him who created him." I love how Paul says in both of these verses, "put on." So we're to put on the new man, to put on and to live in the power of the Holy Spirit. So I want to encourage you, ladies, as you put on your new person, as you put on each morning when you get up. Pastor talked about it on Sunday, about the backpack, which I hope you all have destroyed the backpack, and you're not putting that on anymore, to put on loving kindness and tender mercies. So I want to read you a short story in my closing that really spoke volumes as I read it. The author is unknown, and it's called "The Fence." Once, a young boy with a really bad temper, had a really bad temper. The boy's father wanted to teach him a lesson, so he gave him a bag of nails and a hammer, and said, "Every time you lose your temper, you have to hammer a nail into our back fence." On the first day of the lesson, the little boy had driven 37 nails into that fence. He was really mad. Over the course of the next few weeks, the boy began to control his anger, so the number of nails that were, the numbers of nails that he hammered in the fence dramatically decreased. It wasn't long before the little boy discovered it was easier to hold his temper than to drive those nails into that fence. Then the day finally came when the little boy didn't lose his temper, not even once. He became so proud of himself. He couldn't wait to tell his father. Pleased, his father suggested that now, every day that you don't lose your temper, pull one nail out. Several weeks went by, several days went by, several weeks went by, excuse me. Finally, it came when the boy was able to tell his father, "No more nails in the fence, father." Very gently, his father took his son by his hand and led him to the fence. "You have done well, my son," he said, with a great big smile, "but look at the holes in the fence. Do you see that that fence will never be the same again?" The little boy listened carefully as his father continued to speak. "You see, son, when you say things in anger, they leave permanent scars, just like those. And no matter how many times you say, 'I'm sorry, I didn't mean to,' the wounds are still there." So ladies, in closing, my take home for you, I have two points for your take home before you break into your group. The first one is, what controls your tongue? Your emotions or God? And my second point, my second take home, I'm sorry, is, are you still pounding nails into the fence? And are you doing it daily? Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight, Lord. I thank you for this opportunity to share with the sisters in Christ, Lord, and I just want to encourage them, Lord, to just seek you in all, in all areas, and especially in our tongue, that we are women, that we should be edifying and lifting each other up, encouraging and loving on one another, Lord, not just here, but in our homes, in the store, at work, Lord. Guide and direct us, Heavenly Father. Go with us as we go into our small groups and be in our discussion time. And we thank you for this. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you, ladies.